Get into chapter five and six today. So I'm going to start us with just a simple prayer. It's actually the prayer to the Creator. The Pope Francis ends Fratelli Tutti with. So let's just gather in a moment of prayer. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen.
Lord, Father of our human family, you created all human beings equal in dignity. Pour forth into our hearts a fraternal spirit and inspire in us a dream of renewed encounter, dialogue, justice, and peace. Move us to create healthier societies in a more dignified world, a world without hunger, poverty, violence, and war. May our hearts be open to all the peoples and nations of the earth. May we recognize the goodness and beauty that you have sown in each of us and thus forge bonds of unity, common projects, and shared dreams. Let the people of God say amen.
Amen.
Okay, so that's to mute yourself so you don't have any background noise. I'm going to be sharing my screen to do the first chapter of Fratelli Tutti. So here we go. Sorry about that. Okay. Well, chapter five, a better kind of politics. The primordial question. Where is your brother? Pope Francis, when he introduces the parable of the Good Samaritan in chapter two, gives the theological and spiritual context. And he says that for a first century Jew, the context for that parable would naturally be the story of Cain and Abel. Where is your brother? And Jesus's response to that question indeed could be summarized as his entire ministry. But one clear response to that question was the story, the parable of the Good Samaritan. Pope Francis sees in the parable a personal, communal, and global ethic. To love our neighbor on a global scale will require a better kind of politics. Pope Francis clearly recognizes the distaste for politics. And I don't know if you saw any of these things, but there was these little cartoons that was aired by CNN, and they were just wonderful cartoons. They kind of playfully made fun of the division that we have in our country. Francis recognizes that politics has become a distasteful word due to the mistakes and corruption and inefficiencies of our politicians. But he also says, can we live without it? Can we actually do human life without politics? And his answer, of course, is no. Francis, this is a very important concept. Politics is greater than economics, and economics is greater than efficiency. Now, this is the Amazon distribution center. Oh, my God. I don't know if I really wanted to know how the sausages were being made. So you can see that it's kind of the, an image of efficiency, right? Let me give you another personal example. How many of us have been stuck on hold doing customer service? Either tech support or trying to make an airline reservation? In other words, what happens is that efficiency, being able to make as much money as possible serves capitalism or economics. But even economics has to bend to the politics. And Francis says, you know, economics, the market economy, could not address the pandemic. It can't do that by itself. You need to have something greater than economics. And that's a, it's a really different kind of perspective. So he claims that politics is a lofty vocation. And so I was trying to imagine, you know, where, where, where could we look? And of course, I thought of the March on Washington and the, the I Have a Dream speech by Martin Luther King. He also has this wonderful image of crossing a river. So when we try to think of crossing a river, the Good Samaritan helps you across the river, right? So like these little kids, they're helping each other get across the river. That's kind of a commonsensical understanding. But what does crossing a river look like on the political level? Well, on the political level, the politician mobilizes the community to build a bridge. So the kids helping each other cross the river on an inner tube on the political level is building a bridge that everybody can use to cross the river. And I just thought that was a great image. It captures this whole chapter in one image for me. Pope Francis clearly says that the church's social doctrine, this is all of Catholic social teaching, all of Catholic social teaching is derived from charity. And charity is not just close personal relationships. You're my friend, you're my family member, you're my beloved, you're my spouse. No, 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 not just close personal relationships, which are good in of themselves, but also on macro relationships. Just think of the breadth that he's talking about here. Close personal relationships and then our ability to actually care for all of humanity. That's not too much of a stretch for Pope Francis. Now, we're going to talk about the people, and we're going to talk about liberalism. And the first thing you have to do is, I'm not talking about Democrats, and I'm not talking about Republicans, right? I'm not talking about either one of them, all right? So, so kind of try to, try to put those images to the side. Why? Because of Francis's political maturation. He grew up in Argentina. Indeed, he grew up with Peron. Peron was a populist or popular politician. He, he was a people movement. Not, not, you know, not, you know, so, so he's a kind of a people movement. And that was kind of the context that Francis grew up with. Okay, so two, two concepts. You have the people and you have liberalism. Now, Francis says that both of these can be flawed and both of them can be good, right? And so he's trying to appreciate the goodness of these perspectives. And he claims that they can really balance each other out when both of them are at service to the common good. Liberalism has an emphasis on the individual, their rights and their liberty, especially in economics and private property. The notion of people emphasizes the people on the injustice that they have suffered and on efforts to right a wrong. The problem with liberalism is that it can degenerate into individualism. And the problem with a notion of the popular or populism is that it can degenerate into a form of nationalism. So two political perspectives, both have strengths, both have possible negative side effects. So when I was reading this, liberalism, I kind of get, I kind of understand that. But this, we, the people, what, how do we understand that? And so I was trying to figure out a slide or an image. Now, to tell you the truth, the first images that came to mind were very negative images. The first image that came to mind was nine eleven. You know, you have this, this, you know, this crushing, terrible thing that happened to, to, to our country, and, and it brought people together pretty quickly. So, so then I was thinking, well, what would be a positive image? And, and that's something that when we break into breakout rooms, that's something I would want you to think about. What, what would be a positive image of American citizens seeing themselves as a people? A people that's bonded together regardless of, of race or ethnicity or creed or gender. The image that came to mind for me, and I'm, I'm showing you my age here, is the landing on the moon. There was just something amazing about that moment when we came together as a people. So I, I think that's what Francis is trying to get at. He really likes this notion of being a people. He actually wrote a pastoral letter on the 200th anniversary of Argentina, when he was still the Archbishop of Buenos Aires, about the need for, for folks to come together and, and to be a people, to be a people. Okay, so some implications of this notion of being a people, of having a positive politics. What we can do on the personal and corporate level is resist selfishness, concupiscence. There, we, we have a natural tendency towards this, and we can resist it. We can foster tenderness, and Beth is really going to talk about that more in, when she looks at chapter six. You can promote solidarity, and you can examine our own conscience. We can be self-aware. And then Pope Francis gives these seven questions, which are just, when people say we need to pray this encyclical, I think this is what they're talking about. How much love did I put into my work? What did I do for the progress of our people? What mark did I leave on the life of society? What real bonds did I create? What positive forces did I unleash? How much social peace did I sow today? What good did I achieve in the position that was entrusted to me? Francis, oops, sorry. I don't know how I did that. Oh, I just turned on the translator. So now you can see that, I'll have to figure out how to turn that off in a minute. Francis ends with this notion of hope. We can cultivate a better kind of politics. He reminds us that so many of our efforts will not achieve great results. It can help, at least if we can help at least one person, then that has justified the offering of my life. It is notable and noble to place our hope in the hidden power of the seeds of goodness that we sow and thus to initiate processes whose fruit will be reaped by others. So, hope, I, I, I just love the image of our first responders. Those of us around the table today are not probably first responders. We're probably second responders. Through our organizations and our own labor, we can forge a new type of politics, one that transcends individualism, is centered on the innate dignity of every human being, and works together to build whatever bridges people need. We can put love into our work. We can form bonds with and among strangers, and we can sow the seeds of social peace. Okay, that's my little summary, my introduction to chapter five. I'm doing a time check, it's 1:23. So I'm now going to ask you to unmute yourselves, and we're going to go into breakout rooms. So, basic questions. What did you hear as I was talking? What did you hear that resonated with you? What did you hear that challenged you? And, and what image comes to mind for you of the United States citizens becoming a people? Okay, so breakout rooms, we're going to have four people to a breakout room.
I need to start over. I was telling my small group that I felt like this document is preaching to the choir. Everything you, we live. And it resonates so deeply for me. And resonates deeply. I mean, the first paragraph in his document I'd like to read resonates, and just we could spend the rest of our day talking about just the paragraph 198. Approaching, speaking, listening, looking at, coming to know and understand one another and to find common ground. All these things are summed up in the one-word dialogue. If we want to encounter and help one another, we have to dialogue. There's no need for me to stress the benefits of dialogue. I have only to think of what our world would be like without the patient dialogue of the many generous persons who keep families and communities together. Unlike disagreement and conflict, persistent and courageous dialogue does not make headlines, but quietly helps the world to live much better than we can imagine. Pope Francis begins his whole, this whole chapter, chapter six, by breaking down what I found to be two sections, the hindrances and possibilities. He begins by taking or by talking about our, our basic human nature and our encounters with one another as we react naturally in two ways, either selfish indifference or violent protest, which then connected to our instincts of fight or flight. But as we found in chapter five, his call to us is to cross that river, that image that Don identified or pulled out of crossing the river is so powerful. And that's that bridge, the bridge of crossing that river is dialogue. We don't have to do it alone. We can't do it alone. I think of the many immigrants along the Texas border. I'm from Mission, Texas. And the number of people who have drowned by trying to cross that river by themselves. It takes the whole village, it takes one another to help them across. And then even deeper, as we look into politics and our world and everything. The basis of consensus, I found a lot of, of the, almost a list of hindrances to dialogue. Confusion with opinion. We are inundated. I think what media has done has provided a platform for opinions. No dialogue. Opinions are simply parallel monologues, that's all they are. The media here is manipulated by those in power. We see that with, most recently with fake news. What's, and we've always known that. I think about the book 1984, I've known that since I started studying those books. You know, media is going to be manipulated. But the media, on the negative side, only allows for opinions. It doesn't allow for any human interaction right now. The lack of interdisciplinary conversations. Chapter five, but also this chapter identified how there's no one talking to each other. We are a world of experts. Experts in this, experts in that. And we don't seem to have any clear of truth. And that's where we get to hear in a little bit. All of this is, filters into only a concern for power and control. Relativism is brought up here because it is a hindrance, because it's the absence of objective truths, and it's the absence of morality. There's no compass in relativism. And he's very distinct in separating relativism and pluralism in, in this, in this particular chapter. Indifference and heartless individualism. And then we saw that in even at the, the, the the negative side of liberalism is, it denigrates into severe individualism. But I like that he identified it as a sin of sloth. We become lazy, we don't dialogue, we stick to ourselves. Ethics and politics are reduced to physics, a calculus of benefits and burdens, what benefits us and what burdens us. We increase what we, what benefits us and we get rid of what burdens us. And then justice mirrors Vogue, in-vogue notions. Justice pops up when, or needs of justice pop up and become popular, and then they fade away. And I think that might be why what's been happening in our nation this past year, it's not going away. Because in the past, or even in smaller communities, moments of justice or needs for justice, injustice has become in vogue, and they need to stay in the forefront of our minds. Oops, let's see. So crossing the river, this is where he starts going at the consensus and truth have to come together. And they do that as the key to, is, the key is human dignity. And he emphasized how sacred and inviolable human dignity is. We have to have respect of identity and experience. Fruitful public debate. I remember, now, I never took it because I don't like arguing. It seemed too technical and organized for me. But debate classes, the traditional debate of doing your research, presenting your sides, and then coming to a conclusion over to which side had better argument points than the other. We do not have fruitful public debate, and that was very evident in the past several seasons of elections we've had in our nation. Comprehensive and integral knowledge of reality. We have to have great thinkers that think outside their box, that think beyond their expertise. The person who might be developing a vaccine, but also being conscious of, or the company developing a vaccine and being conscious of nations hoarding it, but how do we get it to the, the countries that can't afford it? They have to have a broad perspective of reality. We, we have to do our research. Media can be, and he applauds this in several of his documents other than this one, that it's a, is a wonderful tool, a blessed gift of creating a sense of unity. So how do we use media to create unity? We're doing that right now. We're all across the nation. We have someone in Rome today. So we have someone in the hospital today. Look at how we're building community in so many different ways. Pursuit of higher values. We have to go above and beyond the status quo. We have to enlist moral reasoning. We have to apply critical thinking. In higher ed, we, how many students we come across who do not know how to use their critical thinking skills? I love my 14-year-old son, he has no critical thinking skills. And that drives me batty. The pluralistic society, he balances out against relativism, is that we're not being relativistic, we're being pluralistic. We're honoring the diversity and experience of everyone that's present at the table. And this all could lead to true dialogue, the need to really communicate and understand one another. He had a great, huge conviction of fundamental truths. To take all of our respect, the clear thinking, our rational arguments, variety of perspectives, and bringing everyone to the table, we add that conviction of fundamental truths. Through dialogue, we identify. And even he identifies that agnostics and atheists can come to a conclusion that there are fundamental truths that are solid in our humanity. We add that together, and we come up with rising, raising us above the consensus. So consensus is important. But by the work we do with one another, we strive and rise above it. It's actually transcendental. It's, 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 it's bigger than what we are. And this image came to mind because it's a harmony. We can have an interest in society. We can have consensus and objective truth and have a beautiful chord in, in, in the symphony of life, if we're going to use that analogy. I just, that just resonated to me, that we don't have to get rid of one or the other of any of these, but they can live harmoniously together, much like we can. He had a beautiful image of a polyhedron. And I love this particular image because of the colors. But a polyhedron, and the emphasis of that symbol, is that its parts are, oh, my goodness, if I can get the, the phrase right, the parts are greater than the whole. The whole is greater than the parts. I'm going to get that mixed up, I always do, I apologize. But if we can look at and strive for social peace, we'll have an enduring stability. By integrating differences, we will have genuine and lasting peace. By recognition of the, of a right, he actually used the phrase, the right to be oneself, we can enter into a social covenant. And that social covenant places the common good as the priority, much like what Don said in his presentation. And this leads us to Christotis, if I think I said that right. And when I looked up the, even the pronunciation of it, it has a long E, it's a Christotis, I believe. And it reminded me of Christos. And actually, when I looked up how to pronounce it, it all, everything went to Christos first. So if Christos, which is Christ, is kindness, Christotes is kindness or genuineness in Greek. We come to what he talked about as the, the epitome, the, the need for genuine kindness in our world. And he left us with Galatians, and I added chap, uh, number 23 to it. In contrast, the fruit of the Spirit is love, joy, peace, patience, kindness, generosity, faithfulness, gentleness, self-control. This is the line I wanted to really emphasize, against such there is no law. Having kindness and showing kindness, if that opens the door to genuine dialogue. I think of the many times, the simple smile or the thank you to the person bagging my groceries, the change in to the person bagging my groceries, the change in attitude that they may have had, or the, maybe they smiled at me and I was like, oh, I was grumpy. If we can be kind, then we can start the revolution of this new cultural, culture that he is calling us to, of the culture of encounter. So that is where I will leave you for the moment, is that culture of encounter.
I'm going to reclaim a host, Beth.
Perfect, because I'll let you do that, I'll get all jumbled in doing that.
So, um, uh, first Beth, thank you for that wonderful presentation. Again, uh, Beth, do you have any, any, uh, any additional instructions as we go into our breakout rooms?
The hardest thing for me is I felt like, again, like I was preaching to the choir. What resonates with you? What may, maybe what are some of the challenges? Um, what questions do we need to be asking to further our work? In our places of mission, what can we do to help one another?
Great, and I'll call us back in about, a little bit more than, about six minutes, I'll call us all back. Enjoy your rooms.
Very much.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, welcome back, everyone. If there's any comments that you would like to share, uh, and noticing that we're kind of running out of time, comments, uh, that you'd like to share, any insights? Feel free to do that in the chat function. I'm looking for Beth, where's my, there she is, Beth. What I'd like to do is what we kind of done in the past and, um, it is time for us to end, so it's 2:01. So Beth is going to close us with prayer. And then after prayer, anyone who wants to kind of hang on and just chit chat for a little bit, feel free to do that. So, um, Beth, if you would lead us in closing prayer.
Using the ecumenical Christian prayer at the end of the document, but I will, um, pray that with us today. Oh God, Trinity of love, from the profound communion of your divine life, pour out upon us a torrent of fraternal love. Grant us the love reflected in the actions of Jesus, in his family of Nazareth and in the early Christian community. Grant that we Christians may live the gospel, discovering Christ in each human being, recognizing him crucified in the sufferings of the abandoned and forgotten of our world and risen in each brother or sister, a new start. Come, Holy Spirit, show us your beauty reflected in all the peoples of the earth so that we may discover anew that all are important and all are necessary, different faces of the one humanity that God so loves. Amen.